Call the Public Safety Committee to order please. We have a on tap today, one of the things we do have a guest which is Jesse Marley from the North Country SPCA, who's going to be giving a presentation on the recommendation, starting presentation on some, one of the recommendations from the Animal Cruelty Task Force Report, which was issued about a year ago or so to the board. I hope that everybody has copies or, you know, still has copies of that report. Right now we have a little bit, some technical difficulties and Mike Masgren is just going to fix that for us, so we will push that a little bit later to the end. So we'll go ahead with the regular agenda. So we'll start with the Veterans Office. Mr. Maryhugh, any?
I have no announcements this morning.
Thank you very much. County Sealer?
The Sheriff's Department, there are any questions?
Any questions for the County Sealer? Thank you very much. Board of Elections?
Excuse, thank you.
District Attorney?
I have a call for the Director of Emergency Services.
Any questions for the County, for the District Attorney? Okay. Emergency Services, Mr. Jakewish?
Good morning. The first is to accept the foam trailer from Department Homeland Security and Emergency Services. Brief history is this trailer was delivered to International Paper Company. You remember all the news coverage of the oil trains that are passing down the Lake Shaplane Quarter? So the Governor's bought, I think 30 of these, possibly more, these foam units. They carry 650 gallons of A-Two-F foam and large turret nozzles that are remotely controlled. They actually brought the trailer up, put it at IP, and then somebody in the state said, "Hey, we need a contract for this." So we said, "Well, what kind?" He said, "Just a loan agreement." So we said that, Dan signed it, and now the comp trailer wants us to have a resolution that simply says that we accept the foam trailer. It's a loan, it's a loan, it's not ours. We have conducted two training sessions on the trailer, and its purpose, of course, is to protect the railroad corridor, pretty much, but it can be used in other incidents as well. So it's a large tote of foam is what it is. Value at about, to refill that would be about $28,000. So there's a whole procedure to go through to ensure how it's used and the way it's dispatched to ensure that the state will refill it once we, if we do in fact use the foam. But I'd need a resolution to accept the agreement.
Move by Mr. Moore, a second. Mr. Whitson, discussion? Mr. Cosmow.
So it's IP, is that where it's staying?
Yes, right now, yes. It has to be in a heated area.
Okay.
Yeah. We are really stretched for space storing anything right now.
Too bad you didn't have somewhere more central on the eastern corridor here, but uh...
Yeah. Another, yeah, there is another foam unit in Critic County and that stored, I believe it started out the airbase, but it is going to be manned by the Plattsburgh Fire Department. It's kind of a special skill to operate this.
Any of the questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries?
And then I put in your mailboxes last week, I hope you have it, is the annual Essex County Emergency Services Report for 2016. I just need a resolution to accept that and file it.
Motion please. Mr. Monti, second. Mr. Miga, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries?
I need a resolution to accept the Essex County Deputy Fire and EMS Coordinator list. And every year I do a new list of who our Deputy Fire Coordinators are, who do a great service for us for very little compensation, so I'd like that resolution.
Motion, Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Miga. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries?
Then I'd need permission to apply for and accept the 2016 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant for $19,748, and that principally funds part of my salary. We have to do what's called a Professional Development Series. I have to be educated and certified in those series of instruction, but it's, that's principally what that's used for.
Motion please. Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Giavano. Discussion?
Oh, just a question. Is it Mr. Marley's or that Grant, Don?
No, no, it's just toll grant, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries?
And then we're going to the State Homeland Security Program, a grant for $120,000. Of that, $90,000 for local emergency services, and the remaining balance is $30,000 for the Sheriff's Department, and I'm doing that for Sheriff Cutting at the same time. And I need a resolution to accept, apply for and accept that grant.
Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Moore. Discussion? Mr. Cosmow.
What are we applying for?
It generally funds the hazmat team in our instance, and I don't know what the budget for the Sheriff made out, but right now it's in the application stage. Then we'll have to list the budget when we do the application. That's exactly what we're going to do with it, but it principally funds our hazmat team and the salary for our part-time hazmat coordinator.
Thank you. Mr. Monti?
Are there any costs associated to accounting for this $120,000?
Absolutely not.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries?
I'm trying to be brief here, but I will give you a brief update on the radio system. As far as the bond on it, which was $10 million, I've done some work with Winda. We've, we've got roughly around $500,000 left in the fund. By however, we've got to remember that we've got to decommission the Belfry Mountain Tower. The Adonard Park Agency required that part of our permit. That's a 190-foot tower that's going to have to be taken down this spring or summer. And we also have to take down the Wells Hill Tower, which is a 40-foot tower. It shouldn't be that expensive, so I'd like permission to go RFQ and write up an RFQ for the decommission of both those towers. That would come out of the radio fund if there's a cost to us. I have no idea what it's going to cost until we do the bid process. So I didn't ask for it, but I might as well now, is I'd like permission to go to RFQ for the decommission of those two towers.
You have a motion, please? Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Giavano, discussion?
Just a question. Where will the most commonly decommissioned, where will the transmission be compensated for?
That's a good question because you're new of us. We actually erected two new towers adjacent to the old ones. The one on Wells Hill is slightly higher, and the one at Belfry is 180-foot tower located just below it. So we had, we had to get off the old towers.
Yeah, that was part of the process, that we agreed that when we built the new towers, we would remove the old towers.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries? Any else?
There's, there's, if you remember, maybe you're not aware, but several, a month or two ago, we lost our routing to our 911 center due to the fiber being broken while they were working on it in Lewis. What that did was $7, 911 trunks, and put us out of business. What I'm going, I'm looking into now is what's called diverse routing, which most 911 centers have, but we do not have it yet. And what it does is, the initial routing will come from Lewis and go to the central office, which we call the Central Office down here in Elizabeth Town, it's located on the corner down here, but we need another central office. We need diversity, we need a diverse route, which means if you cut half of our trunks, the other half will survive. So we are looking into diverse routing, and the initial cost is about $184,000, that I just got from Verizon. That would route us to a central office in Plattsburgh. I don't know where I'm going to get the funding for that yet, but I want you just, as a matter of discussion, know that I'm working on this. I think it's crucial that we have this diverse routing. The state police were very interested in the fact that we did not have it. And we initially did when we had copper, but when they converted to fiber, we lost that diversity. So I am working on that, I just want you to be aware of it. The last thing I have is the EMS update, which I'd like Patty, if you would be so kind as to give her the floor, to speak about what she's done with the new position as EMS Coordinator.
Please come on. Okay.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, it's kind of cool to be back in front of most of you guys who have been here before, and then welcome to the new folks that I haven't had a chance to talk to as hard as EMS goes. So it's been pretty busy. I started January 1st Emergency Services, and I've met with every single EMS agency short of mine, Roseville, Essex, and Westport. Everybody else I have totally met with, mostly weekends and nights, but we've gotten them all taken care of, and some really interesting information has come out of that. With that being said, this is the plan going forward. I talk with Randy on a regular basis. I have a contact now who literally reaches out to me on a weekly basis from the Governor's Office, and what I'm doing is, once I get past the first round of information-seeking stuff, and keep in mind I'm not a professional at the survey part of it, then what I'm going to do is report back to Randy and the Governor's Office as to what we've found out. With that being said, Mike has been working also on finding money so we can do an official survey. I gave him some information the other day, and then hopefully we'll get some funding in and we'll get it officially done. One of the really interesting things that came out, which like knocked me off my chair, which I guess I wouldn't, shouldn't have been too surprised about, I asked every agency what their operational budget was for the EMS side of things, and I've gotten all sorts of responses from "I don't have a clue" to specific stuff, like they know exactly what's what. Anybody got a guess as to how much we're putting into the EMS system in the county? Over $3 million. $3 million operational-wise for county EMS. So I think that is something clearly to look at. Also, we're putting on the Emergency Services website a survey for the volunteers, volunteer and paid folks to fill out, so we can get more information back from them. A lot of their angst revolves around the travel to training. That's really a huge issue for them. I'll give one example of Ticonderoga. They'll travel up here for an hour for class. They'll sit in class for a couple hours because that helps fill some requirements, then they travel back down to Tye after the class. So they're looking at four hours that they don't have EMS provider, or they have some other EMS providers not in their town covering, but back up here doing training. So that's something I actually have a solution for going forward. So I just kind of want to give you a heads up. I'll pop in every once in a while and just let you know what's going on, and hopefully at the local level be able to reach out to you guys and just give you a heads up specifically to your agencies. There are clearly some agencies that are struggling out there, and you probably know that already, but just in case you don't, then I'll make sure that we touch base on that. Okay?
Questions?
Yeah. On the, the $3 million countywide, does that take into consideration a lot of the, of these ambulances now are billing for service? What's the revenue, anticipated revenue that goes against that?
I actually didn't ask that question, but I'm sure we could put that on the survey going forward. That was just purely the operational cost, the bottom line to run that agency.
Right. Our rescue squad now is in the process of splitting from the fire department, just so that they can, they can bill for services being part of the fire department. But it's, it's even a small town, it's getting very difficult to find people to cover the ambulance. Even the paid, paid departments are having problems finding it. You know, maybe it's time to consider a countywide system.
Right. And what I keep saying as we go out there, because I don't want to have a barrier already between me and the EMS agencies, I have a pretty good working relationship, I feel, with those folks. I want to make sure that, I don't know what it's going to look like in the end, and we all need to come together and kind of figure that out. So we're not, because a lot of agencies, a lot of volunteers, and actually paid, but a lot of volunteers in particular are very, very vested in their agencies, so that will be a big hurdle to overcome, is to get buy-in from everybody, but after I saw that $3 million, it's like, holy Hannah, you know, we should be able to do something.
Mr. Cosmow.
Yep, we, just to expound on Mr. McNally, we've had many discussions about going countywide and the creation of a special district where you don't have all the exemptions, where everybody's contributing towards the cost of this service, a very needed service, obviously. And have you had any discussions whatsoever with the Governor's Office or Legislature? I mean, can we create a countywide emergency service district?
Yeah, I didn't know that without even talking to those guys. It has happened in a couple other counties, for sure, and one of my goals is to reach out to those folks and find out what the process they went through to get to that point, and what the impact to the county level was, but that'll be my next goal.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's certainly something that needs to be, to be done. I know some towns have already gone ahead and created districts, but some towns don't have districts, but the bottom line is, everybody is dependent upon this service at some point or another, and there's many that don't pay a penny towards the cost of the service. And, you know, that can be corrected if you go to countywide special district, which I think we really need to pursue and do that.
And my hope would be also to keep the volunteers engaged because paid people alone's not going to do it.
Yeah. Sure.
We note that Public Health and the Office of the Agent are combining. I've made some observations on my travels, and one observation was made in Florida, that being law enforcement, lifeguard, and EMS are all under one flag. I think that that's a place where we need to look. I've also noted that in Maryland, law enforcement and EMS are one and the same. So for countywide, I think we could start exploring that by having discussions with EMS and with the Sheriff's Department. It's just an idea, it may be off the wall, but it could be a consideration, and it may be a solution.
Okay.
Yeah, just in my own personal situation now, now we're splitting, as a volunteers, the requirements to be an EMT, I was an EMT for 12 years and I volunteered, but the requirements get more and more, and there's less volunteers getting into this, and within, I see within a few years that we're going to, if we're going to have an EMS in Minerva, we're going to have to pay for that service. And I think Sean just went into this, I mean, we're looking, once that becomes something we have to do, we're looking at probably a 10 or 15% increase in our overall town budget to supply that service. And I think maybe possibly, you know, the county could do better, they'll have a deeper pool of people to put out there in the service, so I, I don't know, but it's, it's scary going forward.
It's very scary, you know, I kind of pride myself on, my agency has me in it, so they, you know, I walk away by example, and we're struggling to cover the weekends. Next weekend, just so you know, don't get hurt in our town, next weekend I may not have daytime coverage and will have to go to IMAC neutral aid. That's, that's really, we've had to do that one other time, just recently, which actually dropped a call for the first time, and ETown Lewis hasn't dropped a call in years and years and years. It just shows you that every agency is really struggling with, with coverage.
Another, another point is, as a town, we're not required to supply EMS, we're required to supply fire. But jeez, don't you think this is just common sense that we should be providing that to everybody in the county?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see you guys ever taking the position of not providing EMS. I think that would be kind of suicidal.
I mean, of all the departments, all the departments in the county, that to me seems like probably one of the most important departments that we would have, and it's going to affect everybody in the county at one given time in their lifetime.
Correct.
Or somebody in their family.
Correct.
I mean, this, you know, we have all these busing programs and all this, but this, this, I think, is important.
I agree.
Well, it's, it's a testament to the spirit of volunteerism, you know, throughout the state, you know, or whatever, that they, that this is an issue that never reached government eyes because it was always taken care of, there was always coverage, and now it's becoming an extreme crisis where, you know, you know, where, I know the state public thinks it's coming out of the woodwork, they never saw this coming, but, but we, we are at a crisis level.
Well, as the requirements go up to maintain certification, that's one problem, but also the aging population in Essex County, we don't have a lot of 40-year-old people living in the town of Minerva that will do these jobs any longer.
Correct. The other thing is just an FYI, I, at the last state meeting, I was appointed to the CMAC, which is, I don't, I'm not a voting member on that group, but that's all the docs at the state level, so I feel pretty privileged to be doing that. Also, I'm now the first vice-chair of the state, or state council, and if all goes well, I'll be the chairperson in a couple years, so, you know, and also on the agenda, we have a new chairperson at the state level. It is clear that rural EMS, because it's just not our county, obviously, we're the ones being heard, I think, the most, but not just our county, he has an agenda item of rural EMS at the state level, so I think that's all really, really positive.
Anything else? Just, the only thing that, that I think needs to be acknowledged is that, you know, that when, when the state talks about consolidation, what they don't talk about is where does that cost go? And clearly, it's easy to say that we should consolidate and save money, but what you're really talking about is transferring costs from towns to the county, and there's been no provision on the state level to say, okay, you obviously can't make your cap at the county level if you're going to absorb costs from 18 or 14 fire districts or ambulance districts or hour it works out. So I think that's a, that's a component of this that is being not looked at by the state. You obviously can't consolidate and not absorb costs somewhere else.
I've had this conversation with some state officials, and one of the problems, and when you create a special district, you can go out the lawn or you can go benefit. If you go benefit, then you're not increasing the amount that you're levying, and, which to me makes absolute sense in a situation like this, especially with fire also, because if I'm assessed for $100,000, you're across the street for $200,000, and we're both getting the same identical benefit, but I'm paying twice what you are. So I mean, there are options where you can create a benefit district where everybody pays a share, an equal portion, and I mean, that would be the way to pursue this, I would think.
And just one last thing, not to do with this, but just, I went to the active shooter drill at Osceola Valley High School Friday. It was awesome. Quite frankly, we have no clue as to what to do as far as EMS and fire response to an incident like that, so that's also another thing I'm going to try to work on. It'll take me quite a while to do that, but we need to really be understanding what our presence is at an active shooter drill, and just make sure that we're prepared for that. So that was a very eye-opening event last week.
Anything else? Aye. Sheriff, Sheriff Cutting?
Happy birthday, Donnie. I heard you, I heard you can, I heard you can collect social security as of today.
Any questions for the sheriff? Thank you, thank you very much. Probation, Julie?
We have a public defender, first I need to say, any other questions?
Any questions for probation from the board? Thank you very much. Public defender?
Public defender.
Any questions for public defender? We also have here that the county attorney has prepared considerations on assigned counsel issues. You can take a look on the back here, you can see the costs he's put together before we pay an assigned counsel, and has some recommended alternatives here, let's turn it over to Dan.
Okay, I'm going to ask Brenda Sullivan, come to the dais, so she can join me in this discussion. You can see the last page of the letter that I sent, handed out, assigned counsel costs have kind of skyrocketed. That's not, that's pretty much ubiquitous throughout the state, so it's not only Essex County's costs that have skyrocketed, but they have skyrocketed throughout the state. Brenda and I have been talking about this for a while. Initially, I drafted an assigned counsel plan for the bar association to adopt, but with the advent of these increases, the new Hurrell-Herring law, which was the five-county lawsuit, which resulted in a settlement wherein, at least for those five counties, all indigents must be represented at arraignment. That doesn't apply to us yet because there was a settlement, not a court mandated rule, but that's coming down the pike. So basically, assigned counsel is regulated by Article 18B of the county law, and that provides four basic ways that we can provide indigent assigned counsel for criminal cases, family court cases, some surrogate court cases, some civil cases, and some guardianship cases. And those four areas where we can do this is, number one, we can have our public defender do it pursuant to a local law. Number two, we can have a legal aid society do it, which we don't have here in the county. Number three, we can have a bar association approved plan where a panel of attorneys in the local area are on the plan, and they provide that representation. The fourth option is any combination of those first three. Currently, we have a assigned counsel program under the third level, which is the, of our association proposed plan. The assigned counsel is at $75 an hour for felonies, $60 an hour for Mr. Miners, and the end of court is at 75 also, right Brenda?
Yes.
Currently, the way the plan is operating is the judges assign the counsel, our public defender's office also has a hand in that assignment. The attorneys are assigned from Essex County, but they're also assigned from outside of the county. And oftentimes, a lot of these attorneys are coming from the Glenns Falls area and from Warren County, which is a problem for us because we pay for travel time. We're currently paying travel time at the same rate that we're paying for our legal representation, which is either the $60 Mr. Miners or $75 for family court or felony. And that becomes very expensive when you, it's a three-hour round trip at $75 an hour. So Brenda, and I have looked at this to try to come up with some sort of a solution to how we can ameliorate that exorbitant expense, when you might be coming up for half an hour hearing or half an hour conference. But we are currently paying those rates for that. In addition, we're paying the 57 cent mileage rate for travel for the attorneys to come to court. So the options which the county has in addressing this issue are, number one, stick with what we have with our assigned counsel plan, which is the panel of local attorneys, and modify that somewhat. And Brenda has indicated just, just in, with one instance, that we may well be able to save $100,000, but Brenda, I'll let you speak to that instance.
Using 2015 figures, paying a attorney $75 an hour to travel and the 57 and a half cents for mileage, if we cut that to just a flat $40 an hour, we could have saved in the 2015 budget $103,282.46, which is probably 15 to 18% of the overall budget for the assigned counsel program last year. We spent $615,000 for assigned counsel.
Okay, so what we propose is, instead of $75, we would pay $40 straight, no mileage, not, not to $75 an hour. Also, we would propose, if you continue, if you decide to go with this, this option, that attorneys be assigned only, the assignments be made only from attorneys in Essex County or have an office in Essex County, with the caveat that in exceptional circumstances, we are, we will have to go outside the county, and in that instance, we try to have some sort of radius so we're not, you know... know, radius from the court, uh, so that, uh, we can still cut down on those travel times. Um, but we would, we would, we would want Essex County attorneys only. That's been done in other counties, uh, and so, uh, I'm assuming that will be approved by the state. Just as a, the assigned counsel plan, if we make these amendments, it needs to be approved by the bar association, it needs to be approved by us, and it needs to be approved by the state. So these things that I'm suggesting need to be approved by the state. And the alternative, if they're not, if we have to pay mileage and the forty dollars, we would still save money. Or, uh, if, uh, if we can get away with just paying mileage, we may try that, but that, we'll have to see how the state, whether the state approves that or not.
Dan, is there a cap on the travel time? I mean, when you're paying travel time, I mean, what if I decide to take the long way around from Glenns Falls to Elizabeth Town or, I mean, how do you, how do you control that?
Well, we basically go the straight route, Brenda.
I'm saying, so you cap it, okay? We estimate it's an hour and twenty mile trip, so you're gonna get...
Yes, we use MapQuest.
Beyond that.
And we, that, we, we, uh, kind of bottled it using the state's program. We use MapQuest for the time and the mileage.
Okay.
Um, and go the shortest route. That's what we allow.
And it's capped, okay?
It's capped.
Thank you.
Um, another thing we'd like to change too is a lot of the attorneys are submitting their bills, you know, way after the representation is concluded. There's one attorney who submitted bills for what, Brenda?
Uh, in January of this year, he submitted approximately thirty thousand dollars worth of bills that were from two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen.
Which poses a budgetary problem, so we're going to put in this, if we go this route and we amend this, we're gonna have to amend this anyway, one way or the other, because we're gonna, but anyway, uh, we would put that either a sixty day after the representation or ninety day, and then if you're not gonna get it, unless you can show exceptional circumstances. If you're too lazy to get your bill in, too bad. And, uh, you know, if that happens once or twice, that problem will be fixed and then we won't run into these things where we're getting a thirty thousand dollar bill from some attorney in Plattsburgh that...
And I do, I do send out yearly in December, a letter to the attorneys that we've paid in that year, so I can miss them. I guess now I can get a list from the, the judge's office of attorneys that have been assigned, but I do send them a letter asking them to submit through December thirty-first. It works pretty good, but you still have some that slip through the cracks.
Uh, also, we, we will, uh, change the way, uh, billing is made and billing, all billing will be in real time, so you actually put a start date and finish, a time and a finish time. Brenda, I'll let you speak to that.
I showed Dan several, uh, claims that I received from an attorney and there were numerous charges, um, phone call with client, one hour, one hour. There's, you know, some attorneys will submit in real time, but a lot of attorneys just a flat fee of an hour every time they do something.
The rounding up is my guess. Just, I mean, you're on the phone for an hour with a client, uh, granted, it may be your initial conference, that may be an hour, hour and a half, whatever that takes, but when you see hour, 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 uh, unless it's a complex matter, uh, that sends off a red flag, so...
I, I just have a, I mean, all this sounds good, but is, are we gonna be able to, with these new rules or guidelines, are we gonna be able to retain attorneys at these rates? I mean, what's the market gonna bear as far as supply and demand here if we cut, cut the rates down? Are people still gonna wanna travel from Glenns Falls up here for the reduced rate?
Probably not. I don't, I can't speak to that. Uh, some hungry attorneys will want to, others won't.
Right.
But, uh, it's just, uh, we believe that there'll be, there's competent representation here in Essex County with Essex County attorneys, so why should we be bringing these other attorneys up? Except in extraordinary circumstances where there might be...
You know, that's a, that's a service, we're mandated to supply attorneys and, you know, we have to make sure that we're gonna have a viable pool to get coverage for these people.
And that's a good point. Uh, the state wants to ensure that, you know, we're not just picking a bunch of attorneys that we're picking, that we're using competent attorneys that will represent these individuals as competent as we do on the other side.
Dan?
Yes.
It's, it's my understanding in past discussions that we've had that it's difficult to get Essex County attorneys to participate in the assigned counsel program, so unless we find the reasons as to why they don't wanna participate, how do you correct that problem?
That's a good point. Uh, that has to be, uh, instilled in them. If they don't want to, and this is the first option, there are these other two options that we would consider, but this is just if you wanna kind of bolster what we have and, and make some cost-saving adjustments that, that could save us. And I'm, I'll let you read the rest. A lot of, a lot of this stuff is, you know, we're not gonna reimburse, you got attorneys who are texting their clients, you know, an hour for texting, I mean, you know, pick up the phone. Uh, you get a lot more done in ten minutes on the phone than you do texting for an hour. Uh, so there'd be no more texting, we're not gonna pay for our office overhead, uh, things of that nature, so you see all that stuff. Another thing that, an IDV court, I don't know if this will pass muster, Christie and Brandon might have some input on this, but, you know, misdemeanors in IDV court, sometimes they'll be, these are being charged at seventy-five dollars an hour, but they're misdemeanors, so they should be the only sixty dollars an hour. I don't know about DWAIs and other violations, whether we even have to provide representation because those are violations, um, if they have any sort of jail time associated with them, they might. So, but basically, the first option would be stay with our assigned plan, but modify it and tighten it up a little bit, where we'd probably save over a hundred thousand dollars.
Option two is second, which is the public defender.
Sure, I'll go through it.
Just one quick question. Do we have, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Clinton County actually does RFQs for this and they, they have law firms doing that?
Yeah, I guess, no, okay. Second option is the public defender's office. Um, they do a very good job, uh, in representing, representing the criminal defendants. Uh, there are conflicts which we, those conflicts go out to the bar association. We could have the public defender handle, uh, the family court assignments also. Um, my guess is they probably would need three attorneys to do this, I don't know, I haven't spoken at length to Brandon, uh, but will, uh, so, uh, that option's out there, it's viable, um, it's just the, the cost, you wanna see how that, that equates to what we're doing now or what we might do with a contract, in the contract venue like you just brought up. So, um, I'll be speaking to Brandon about that and, uh, see, see what his thoughts are. But when you get into hiring people, you've got their salary and you've got their retirement, you've got their health insurance, they've got, so that all, that all starts to, you know, climb as far as costs are concerned. And then the, the final area is an outside counsel contracts. Um, Clinton County hires attorneys by contract to do their, uh, assigned counsel work for both family court and criminal court. They, uh, put out an RFP, uh, the attorneys bid a certain fixed sum of money, say sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand, whatever it is, uh, and then that's what they get paid, it's divvied up monthly, that's what they're paid, there's no overhead, there's no travel, there's no nothing, that's what you bid on, you, you will provide, uh, at one point, it was twenty-three cases a month, uh, then I think their newest contract provides for, uh, you know, thirty-three percent of the assigned counsel criminal cases. And then speaking with Justin Meyer, who's the assigned counsel administrator over in Clinton County, that's been working very well, and he's had good coverage, like he said, ninety percent of the cases are being covered by that and the bar association. Um, that would be something that would be, we should explore, um, we would, in my opinion, I think we could get away with three attorneys, uh, to do their work. Um, we might try it on a trial basis with two, just to see how it's going and keep our bar association active, and then, uh, see what we got for volume, see how that works, see whether it was cost-efficient, and then, uh, go to three. You would also always still retain your bar association for any conflicts, uh, and therefore the first, uh, issue, the, the issues I just, in the beginning of this presentation, would still be pertinent, um, so that, the contract avenue is, is a good idea. Um, my, all of this, keep in mind, has to be approved by the state, so, um, those are your options, and I think the contract, outside contract counsel at this juncture might be the best, but I also wanna talk to Brandon and see what the cost might be.
Mr. Meyer, here.
Do you have any idea what the annual cost is for Clinton County for family and criminal?
I think their total assigned counsel budget was something like one point five million dollars.
And that was for both criminal and...
Yes, yeah. And keep in mind, though, they have an assigned counsel administrator who, and that's something we could consider, who's paid a salary, who, uh, administers the process and also makes the assignments, and, uh, also takes a look at all the bills, which is a difficult thing. Brenda does a good job of looking at those bills, but it's almost impossible if you're, number one, it helps to be a lawyer, so you know what's going on and have some experience as to what does a custody case cost. Number two, the way, what's submitted with these vouchers is sparse, um, and, uh, number three is time consuming. She does a very good job, uh, for instance, for an attorney here that charges a hundred dollars to serve subpoenas, which is because they're charging at the attorney rate, when we could get subpoenas served by either sheriff's office or at a lesser charge. A hundred dollars per subpoena and a hundred dollars to serve a subpoena, it, it starts to add up. And, uh, Christie and Brandon can tell me, but I think when a subpoena is issued, it, it's issued for all further proceedings, if they're adjourned, that subpoena still stays. I've seen some where they go out and serve the subpoenas again. Now, I don't know if it's on a different person or what, but, so things, it's very difficult for her to evaluate those calls. So those are your options. Um, the next thing is I, uh, have calls into Clinton County to get their figures, calls into, uh, Warren County, and, uh, Brenda and I are bringing, putting together some figures so that you have a comprehensive idea what, what might, and I also have to speak to Brandon. Mr. Monty?
How many assigned counsel cases did we have last year?
It's difficult, but Brenda can...
I have numbers, I don't have them with me, um, but my numbers are not true because we have attorneys that will sometimes submit monthly, so my numbers are the amount of case or amount of claims that I, that I actually work on. I think we can get something better for you from the judge's office, and I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Um, in terms of the public defender, do we know what, what the salary with all benefits would be for an additional attorney in that office?
Well, we...
Roughly?
We can come up with that information.
It seems to me that if we could cover that in-house, that that would really solve a lot of our problems.
I think the contract route would be cheaper, but, uh...
Really? Okay.
Well, because when you, I mean, you're not gonna, I think our, well, I'm not gonna go there, but, uh...
You're probably a hundred grand.
Yeah. A hundred grand a person with benefits, you know, health insurance benefits. So there's three hundred grand right there, uh, plus...
If we went to that contract agency and tried that, we could always go back the way we are after the contract expires, correct?
Yes, yeah.
It seems like we're putting a lot of responsibility on, on Brenda to process all these invoices and things, and there's probably some waste in there that we could, uh, get out of there by going with a contract.
Right.
It'd definitely be easier for budgeting purposes.
Yes. Uh, and as I said, we do it as a trial basis, so you still have your assigned counsel pale, but you have two, two attorneys, let's try two first and see how that goes, then you reevaluate at the end of the year. But again, also, we still need to talk, speak to Brandon to see, you know, we gotta look at the numbers. Just, uh, the recommendation, possibly it, uh, comes back with the numbers and speaks to Brandon and also the case, case numbers from the judge's office and stuff, and maybe come back with, uh, ways and means, sure, we can have a report on that, decide whether we wanna go to contract. What contract is that? Mr. Scott, please.
Dan, who, when you say the state has to approve, what agency, every time?
I think it's the Office of Lea, uh, the, uh, OCS and I think the Office of Legal and Indigent Legal Services has the same, too. Um, this new Hurrell Herring case kind of throws a cog in it, and then I think, uh, there's new family court guidelines that just came out, I think in December, so those throw kind of a, a monkey wrench in this. But yeah, the state has to approve.
You've done an excellent job on this, and as you and I know, it's put a lot of time and effort into it, and we all know that that's a cost that can be all over the board and that we have had very little control over, so this is, is very much needed.
Sean has asked me to do it, uh, it's kind of a bit on the back burner.
Yeah.
Because of, and I think this trial, if we go the contract route, that's, the trial basis is a good idea because there's still a lot of things hanging out there that, um, you know, this, uh, counselor arraignment, that's a biggie. Uh, so, but I wanna give Brenda a lot of credit too, she's got all the facts and figures and, uh, she's in the trenches. So it's okay with the committee that will bring it, ways and means is an option, uh, more figures and, uh, frame the plan, and, uh, we can pass it ways and means, that's okay. Thank you very much. Brenda, do you have anything to add? I don't wanna...
Well, just the ideas of, um, changing our plan with, in the first part of your letter, we could realize an immediate savings just by updating our plan, so that might be something, if you're looking into the other, it's going to be more long-range. In the meantime, we could save quite a bit of money by these other changes that are in, that Dan and I have come up with. And a lot of these ideas are from the guidelines for the state attorney for the child, so they're being used by the state now, so we, we could save up to a hundred thousand or more a year by using these ideas now.
Those would have to be approved by the state as well, right?
Oh, okay, yes.
That's a good point. Um, we can do that, get approved by the state, get approved by the bar association, and at least that's in there.
Right.
So, so what's the process? Do we approve it first and then it goes to them? Are we running up the flagpole with them if they approve it, then we approve it?
There's no, uh, set way, but I think I would give it to the state first.
Right.
So don't we waste our time doing all this other stuff?
Right, yeah.
Then, uh, the bar association and, uh, we would finally approve it.
Okay.
And, yes.
So would you like to make a motion then to, uh, to authorize Dan to go to the state to get approval of the first sets of recommendations? Do you have a motion, Mr. Moore?
Yes, I'll second. That's for the forty dollars an hour, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I'll put it right away. Mr. Harrington, a second. Any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Mr. Monty or Mr. Merrill?
So it needs to be approved by the bar association, who's made up of attorneys and judges?
Yeah.
Who could approve cutting their own salaries? Doesn't seem reasonable.
Well, I know, I mean, and this is a, it's a difficult thing, it's a difficult thing for me as a member of the bar association to go, hey, guys, guess what?
Yeah.
Uh, but my duty is to the county, uh, but it's either, um, you know, go with, go with the times and the changes, or maybe we don't have, we don't have to do a bar association plan, we can, we can go another route.
Well, don't we have the right to pay what we wanna pay without getting approval by somebody else? It's the taxpayers' money that we're paying, and this is something we don't go to get approval to pay for other services.
Right.
Why should they approve their services? That doesn't sound right.
Well, two reasons, uh, the, the pay's set by the state, seventy-five to sixty. The second is, or as I said in the beginning, the state only allows assigned counsel to be taken care of by legal aid, public defender, or a plan approved by the bar association. Uh, and our bar association plan is dated nineteen sixty-three. Clinton County's bar association plan is dated nineteen sixty-three, I mean, it's four little paragraphs, so the, I agree with you, they're not gonna want to cut themselves out of the, but if there aren't a lot of lawyers that will wanna do it...
Yeah.
Or if they don't agree, then we can go another route and just, you know...
That looks like, uh, the contract may be the way to go on this one.
Right.
Any other questions on the motion, it's on the floor. Is there any, none all in favor?
I oppose.
Carrington?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, one more. We are ready right now. Jessica, to give you the floor for this presentation.
Thanks for having me and I appreciate the swift technical assistance. Little change in schedule, but we're up and running now. My name is Jessica Hartley, I'm the executive director of the North Country SPCA, which is just right up the road here in Elizabeth Town. I'm here today on behalf of the Essex County Animal Cruelty Task Force, and I'm here to specifically speak to you, um... specifically speak to you and hopefully gain your support and help in addressing a problem that the task force has identified here in Essex County, which is the long-term tethering of dogs outside. So before I jump into the specifics and the details around tethering, I thought I'd just give you a very brief history of the task force to date for those of you who aren't familiar with the group itself. The group started back in around 2012. A group of concerned citizens came together in response to what we perceived was an urgent need to improve animal welfare in Essex County. We came before the Board of Supervisors and pled our case, and in the very beginning of 2013, the task force was appointed in an official capacity. So currently, the group is led by Supervisor Galloin out of Willesboro. We have very strong representation from a number of agencies and offices throughout Essex County. We're very lucky that the DA's office is very involved. Kristi herself is an active and committed committee member and has made this a priority of hers. The same can be said for law enforcement. The Sheriff's Department and the state police are also very active and engaged on the task force. We have the support of local vets, obviously humane organizations of which I am a representative, and we're really lucky to have a couple of very committed and talented Essex County residents, those of you who know Bonnie McLeod. She's been a real driving force behind a lot of the work that we've accomplished to So Sean referenced the report earlier in the meeting. Basically, what happened was, is when we started digging into the issue of animal cruelty in Essex County, we saw that they were much more complicated and much bigger than any of us ever anticipated. So we made a collective decision to take a step back and really look at these issues from a very strategic and methodical perspective. So what that work culminated in, we spent almost a year researching and writing a very thorough and comprehensive report, and it lays out basically a roadmap for recommendations for action to address the animal cruelty issues that we see in Essex County. If anybody doesn't have a copy of that report, please let me know, and I'd be happy to send it to you when I get back to the office. So I'm certainly not going to go through that report of a hundred and sixty-some odd pages and all the recommendations today. I'm here only to speak about one of our recommendations, which is that Essex County consider adopting a countywide ordinance that prohibits or severely restricts the circumstances under which dogs can be tethered long-term outside. So what do I mean by tethering? I will use the terms tethering and chaining probably interchangeably from here on out. Basically, tethering refers to the practice of fastening a dog to a stationary object, a doghouse, a fence post, a tree, a car, and leaving him unattended for a long period of time. I wanna be very clear that we're not talking about dogs that are safely and temporarily tethered for a short period of time when your owners are nearby, you know, you're doing yard work or they're inside the house doing dishes. Those aren't the cases that we're trying to address. We're really trying to address dogs that live their lives on chains, dogs that are isolated from their families, from pack members, dogs that are otherwise neglected, don't receive proper shelter, food or water, or vet care. It's truly a miserable and inhumane existence for them. So what specifically is wrong with tethering? First and foremost, it's an animal welfare issue. There's no way of getting around it. Long-term tethering is simply inhumane for any dog. It's also a big public safety concern, which is why I'm here addressing the Public Safety Committee today. A lot of people don't understand that tethering is not just bad for dogs, it's really dangerous for people too, especially children. So first and foremost, it's an animal welfare concern. Dogs, as we all know, are incredibly social creatures. They absolutely need consistent and loving human interaction, and they need interaction with other animals as well. They need this more to remain, in order to remain physically and behaviorally healthy. Dogs that are tethered long-term outside, that are isolated away from other family members, quickly become bored and anxious and even devolve into severely aggressive behavior. There are a number of specific health and safety risks for dogs that are tethered outside. They can easily become tangled up in their tethers or their chains, and that can quickly lead to injury or even strangulation. We've seen cases at the shelter where dogs get hung up on fences, they get tied up around trees, they fall off the edges of decks. It can be pretty horrific, and it can happen really, really quickly. Tethering also leaves dogs vulnerable to other, to other threats as well. They are vulnerable to attacks by other dogs and other predatory animals that are passing by. They are consistently harassed by people. They're even victims of theft. I don't know if you guys heard about a rash of dog thefts that happened, it was just a few months ago out in the Cannon area. Dogs were disappearing from backyards, and it was dogs who were left out, most often on chains or tethered, and they were unattended in their yards. And the leading, especially the leading theory for these disappearances were that these dogs were being stolen and then sold into dog fighting operations, either as fighting dogs themselves or as bait dogs. They are exposed to mosquitoes and ticks and other biting insects, parasites that live in the soil. This leads to really serious health issues and often failed diseases like heartworm and Lyme disease. We're all aware of the uptick in Lyme disease in our area. At the shelter, when we get a dog in that we know has lived most of its life on a chain, one of the first things that we do is test it for heartworm and Lyme disease, and we've certainly seen an increase in those positive results over the last couple of years. It's heartworm disease, I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but the treatment for it is very tough on the dog. It's incredibly expensive. Lyme disease, there are a lot of complications to go along with that too. It's, it's not only hard on the animals themselves, but it's a huge expense for the shelter that could otherwise be avoided. And then specifically tethered dogs, we often see neck injuries with them. These dogs, like I mentioned earlier, are often neglected by their owners, so when they, when they grow, when they gain weight or when they lose weight, their collars aren't adjusted. This can lead to raw and sore necks and infection, their collars can even become embedded. It's kind of like a tree growing around a fence post. It's pretty horrific. We've seen some pretty bad cases with embedded collars. So in addition to the very specific health and safety risks, tethering really is an animal cruelty issue. It's important to note that most of the animal cruelty cases that we see in Essex County that involve dogs also involve long-term tethering. Dogs that are tied out do not get the same level of care that other, the dogs that are members of the family actually do. They often have inadequate shelter, food, and water, they don't get appropriate vet care, they are exposed to all kinds of extreme weather conditions, and they often live in filthy and dangerous conditions. Think about it, you know, these dogs are forced essentially to eat, sleep, and defecate in a very small area, so that small area can get pretty disgusting pretty quickly. This photo here was taken pretty recently, this was back in December, a local case, and unfortunately, this photo takes off all of those conditions that are listed on the left. The dog is chained to a tree, she does have a doghouse there, but the chain is too short. She can't even get into the doghouse to get out of the elements if she wanted to. There are two food bowls here, one of which is empty, and the other is overturned, so she doesn't have access to food or water. This dog was not current on its rabies vaccine, so even the very basic veterinarian care wasn't being accomplished, and it's hard to tell from the photo, but this was a really cold rainy day, pretty similar to what it's like outside today, and it was just in miserable, miserable conditions for this dog. This is a photo on that same property, there was another dog on the property, again, this was just recently, this is back at the end of December. Again, you can see the chain tied to the tree, an overturned food or water dish, otherwise no shelter or access to food or water, tons of debris, wood scraps and metal scraps. The dog that was on the end of this chain is pictured here. This was Milo. You may have heard about this case, it was pretty recent. He unfortunately, well, he has a great life now, but law enforcement got to him just in time. We were told by our vets when he was rushed to the vet after he was saved from the chain that he, in most uncertain terms, would have been dead within hours had he not been rescued. So those are some of the animal welfare concerns. As I mentioned earlier, it's also a huge public safety concern. Here are some stats from the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control. Chained dogs are almost three times more likely to bite than unchained dogs, and that number actually skyrockets to about five point four times for children under twelve. Unfortunately, most of the victims of dog bites from chained dogs are children, they're small and weak targets, they're often unaware of their surroundings, they can easily wander or toddle into a chained dog's territory and then suffer severe consequences or attacks because of that. The AVMA, the American Veterinary Medical Association, makes it very clear that they warn that tethering or chaining a dog can contribute to aggressive behavior. Dogs, like all animals, including humans, have a very tuned fight-or-flight response. Obviously, if they're tethered, they can't flee from any threat, so their only alternative is to fight. Tethered dogs are usually very unsocialized, they're isolated from their pack members, from their human family, from their animal families, and they can become very territorial. They don't have a whole lot of resources to begin with because most of these dogs are severely neglected, so they will guard the few resources, the few resources that they do have the best way that they know how. So dogs also get loose from tethers all the time. It's really not an effective way to confine a dog. When they are tethered, all they, all they wanna do is get off of that tether, they'll find a way, they'll slip their collars, they'll chew through ropes, and that results in dogs that are just kind of running amok in the neighborhood. They are likely to remain aggressive when they do get loose, which results in attacks on joggers, on other people or passing dogs. They have so much pent-up frustration and aggression that when they have an outlet, they're going to take it. And finally, tethered dogs are rarely vaccinated, and as I mentioned before, more often than not, they live in very unsanitary conditions which can lead to the spread of disease. This is another example here. This is a dog in Essex. This is a female Saint Bernard who was found tied up inside of a barn. It's hard to see, there's some glare in the photo, but she was found tied with a horse lead rope that was maybe two and a half, three feet long, so she really didn't have a whole lot of room to move around. You can see that at one point she was fed because there's any number of empty dog food bags scattered around here, but no access to food or water otherwise. This is just a photo of the outside of the barn, so it gives, gives an idea of the conditions that she was living in overall. So like I said, she was a female adult Saint Bernard. When she came to the shelter, she weighed seventy-three pounds. Breed standard for a healthy adult female Saint Bernard is around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty pounds, so she was over fifty pounds underweight. She barely scored a one on the body condition score chart, which is the chart that vets use to assess the level of malnourishment in dogs. So it's clearly a dangerous practice, but it also leads to a lot of nuisance behaviors. You guys are all supervisors in your towns, I'm sure you're familiar with barking dog complaints. Most often, barking dogs are tethered dogs. They have nothing better to do. They're bored, they're anxious, they're frustrated, they have a whole host of unmet needs, so their only outlet is to bark and annoy their neighbors and their supervisors. They can repeatedly charge people, you know, again, that's this whole idea of being frustrating, having all this pent-up aggression. They'll charge people, vehicles, other dogs that pass by, children. And again, tethering is not an effective way to confine a dog. We have several repeat offenders that, that come into the shelter, like clockwork every month or so, they get off of their tethers, they're picked up by animal control, they come to the shelter, they'll always have to pick them up. In the meantime, they're running in traffic, they're endangering motorists, they're annoying their neighbors, they're showing up in their yards, they're harassing or even killing livestock. It's a, it's a real nuisance. And of course, they can develop digging and chewing behaviors and other property destructive behaviors. This photo here is of Pandora. This was taken last winter, obviously there's snow on the ground. She was found outside of a residence in Essex. There were a couple of other animals on the property that were found under the same circumstances. It had snowed that day or the previous day, and there were no tracks in the snow, so it was pretty clear that she hadn't been getting food and water or otherwise any kind of attention from her owners. And on this day that she was seized by law enforcement, it was negative nineteen outside. So who else opposes tethering? It's not just the Essex County Animal Cruelty Task Force, believe it or not. There are nineteen states across the country that ban or regulate tethering on some level, including Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Maine, and Washington DC. In New York State, there are three counties that we know of and some others in the works that ban or regulate tethering. Suffolk County, Canandaia, and New York City all have tethering ordinances. So all told, more than one hundred and forty cities and counties across the US somehow prohibit or otherwise regulate tethering of dogs. Other groups, large influential groups that oppose this practice are the United States Department of Agriculture. This is an interesting one, the USDA under the Animal Welfare Act. The USDA is a regulatory body for a number of commercial and research entities that house animals as a matter of their business, and so the USDA actually prohibits tethering of dogs as a practice of confinement because it is so inhumane. Of course, the Humane Society of the United States, as I mentioned, the American Veterinary Medical Association, and the ASPCA all oppose the practice of tethering. A really wonderful website and resource where a lot of this information has come from is UnchainYourDog.org. I encourage all of you to take a look at that website. You can see a full list of communities and sample laws that have been passed in other parts of the country. It's actually really valuable. So do tethering laws work? I promise you I would not be here today if the answer was no. It is a resounding yes, and there are a number of benefits that communities see in the short term and long term after tethering ordinances are passed. Most communities report a ninety percent compliance rate with the law after it's passed. That's the biggest fear, right? Is that a law is passed, people either won't know about it, they won't care about it, or it's not enforced, and then the status quo continues. In fact, people are, once they understand why the law is in place, people are pretty happy to adapt to it and to comply with it. And of course, there are public safety benefits. Dog bites decline on average over time. Loose dog reports decline or stay the same over time. Barking dog complaints decline, and the heart of the issue is that animal cruelty and neglect complaints also decline over time, which is what we're trying to accomplish here as a task force. So the bottom line is that any community that somehow prohibits or restricts tethering is a safer, more humane place to live, not just for dogs, but for people as well. And again, this website, I really encourage you guys to check it out. There's a wealth of information in there that I simply couldn't fit into a fifteen-minute-long presentation. I'll leave you on a positive note, a couple of after photos of the dogs that I mentioned earlier. This is Leila, the Saint Bernard on the left, after she was rescued and gained some weight. She is living a wonderful life in Vermont with a new family. And then Milo on the right, he was adopted just a few weeks ago and is doing very well and clearly having a wonderful life with his home in Port Kent. So I'm sure you guys have questions. I did put together a fact sheet for you guys, frequently asked questions that I anticipated. I did put together a fact sheet for you guys, frequently asked questions that I anticipated you guys might have. Feel free to look that over. Otherwise, I'm happy to field questions and answer them as best I can right now.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this law. I just, the thing that comes to my head is that 90%, you know, most laws like this, the deterrence factor is the most important thing. Does the law have any provision for actual, you know, fines or removal of dogs? Is there something in this law that's going to enforce it?
Yes, so we've had a couple of discussions, both of the Sheriff's Department and Dan Manning, about enforcement. We haven't hashed out the specifics of penalties and fines quite yet. We wanted to make sure that this is something that the board wanted to move forward with before we really got into the weeds on that kind of stuff. But certainly, there will be penalties in place. We anticipate that there will also be a significant public education period leading up to it, so that people are aware that this is going to go into effect and they're not blindsided, and that they have some time to get into compliance before the law even takes effect. The enforcement piece of it, there are specific ways that we can word the language to make it easily enforceable, and we have done the research on that, and we've had some discussions with Sheriff Cutting and Dan Manning to make sure that we create a law that is actually enforceable.
Thank you, Jessica. We, as you're aware probably, we have this in a roundabout way in the Mariah local with the continuous barking, which gives us, and as you pointed out, you know, most of those complaints, you go there, the dog is tied. So we did build in a timeframe, if we get complaints that dog continuously barks, we can do something about it. But I think, and I do support this, but I think the bigger part of the problem that we have, and what were the consequences of the people that owned these dogs when you found them in this condition? My bet would be they probably weren't all that severe.
Well, I can't speak to the Milo case, that's the most recent case, and the next hearing is actually this week, so hopefully we'll have a resolution at that point.
I mean, I've seen it, as you know, and I've dealt with it, and it's, you know, there's no consequences for your actions, and it's going to continue. It's that simple. And once our animal enforcement officer goes out, he makes the arrest, he does what he needs to do, then it goes into the court's hands, and we have lost our, you know, not much you can do after that point.
Right, so the thing about animal cruelty laws at the local level, New York State, as you guys probably all know, there is a state ag and markets law in Article 26. Now, because a state law exists, local municipalities and counties are not allowed to legislate animal cruelty. So one of the things that we can do at a local level is pass things like tethering ordinances that get at the animal cruelty issues without interfering with the state ag and markets law.
Ms. Marigan? At this point, I know it's pretty early, would you advocate a county law or individual municipal?
A county law.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Just one more, I just thought it was interesting, there was only three counties at this point, if that was correct on your handout, that have these municipal laws.
Yeah, that we know of in New York State. I know of others that are kind of in the works right now, but haven't quite gotten to the point of passing them. Some of this research might be a little bit dated by a couple of years, but these are the sample laws that we were able to dig up as examples in New York State.
I will say one thing, that, I mean, with the work of Jessica and Bonnie McLeod, who served here, and Kristi Sprague DA, and others in the task force, there's a lot of things that this county task force has done, it's actually leading the pack. People have been coming to this county to get information about what do you, you know, some of the things that we've done so far. So I'm not surprised, we'd only be the fourth if we passed it, but Essex County is leading on this issue in the state.
Yeah, it's a real opportunity for us to be out front on it, and as Mr. Golden said, it's, people are looking to us to lead the way. We have, you know, we're lucky that we have a great deputy who is very versed in the law and very willing to take on the animal cruelty issues that we do see, and we're lucky in that way, we're out in front in that regard, and we're just trying to stay out front on all the other issues too.
I would make the recommendation, as the Animal Cruelty Task Force and stuff, that we could work on the language of a proposed law and bring it for discussion next month to this committee, if that's okay with everybody. Mr. Marano? Is it okay? Hold a second then. All right, so all in favor? Close? Thank you very much. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Any more, any others for this committee? Mr. Marano?
Could we just, a question for Dan. I've just been thinking about if the county ever went to a countywide EMS district. I just can't imagine that not costing mega millions of dollars. In our town, we do a contract with our stuff that's involved in it too, but that's a private corporation. If we went countywide, if the sheriff department was involved, that would be more sheriff, more employees, administrators, health insurance, and retirement, I think it would probably be more than each town handling their own.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what that number is. If Patty's right, if there's about 3 million in cost, you know, that's, that would be essentially your starting point to decide whether you could or couldn't produce the same service at a lower cost here at the county level. You potentially could, I don't know. But that's, you know, certainly, again, that, you know, that may remove the cost from the localities, but it's gonna, somewhere it's still gonna be paid for, and it's gonna be paid for at the county level. But I don't know what that number is. We would have to get a little further into study in order to determine how much it would cost for the county to actually provide that service.
Then you'd have to, old ambulances, old buildings, maintain buildings?
Yeah, no, it's a big animal, there's no question.
And just, and just to piggyback on that, I think people are tracking with the mechanics of this whole proposition, but when the survey went out, it wasn't this, Patty said she had a statewide variety of response. You know, there are a lot of nuts and bolts that you just mentioned with buildings and equipment and vehicle replacement and insurance and things of that nature that might not have gotten captured in the initial request for information, because many of these are large, one-time items that need to be addressed on a kind of as needed basis.
Right.
Something like a heart monitor, whichever ambulance should have on it, that's $25 per dollar.
Right.
And they do need to be replaced with some degree of regularity. So, you know, as we look into this, trying to forecast unintended consequences, means we probably need a pretty sharp rate to sift through all of it.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree. There would be a lot of things we'd have to look at. You'd have to almost develop some kind of a capital improvement project, I mean, a plan to go with whatever you chose to, you know. If you operated the system, you'd have to say, well, okay, there's so many ambulances within the county that's within that, you know, within that plan, there would have to be some kind of a layout of when those would have to be replaced or not replaced, and the equipment that's put on those ambulances, and all those things that go with it. It would be a major project figure, how what a countywide system would cost.
It may be cheaper though, because if you look at all the towns, well, some of these towns are paying, and only town J, it's 275,000 somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
So if each town's paying that, you set up a capital reserve fund also for these types of items into your capital plan, and you work with all the towns, and then the tax goes out, it may be, it may be cheaper, I don't know. And another thing, I think the big, one of the bigger problems is, Dan knows and anybody else is involved in this, is that the pool of people who are willing to volunteer and to commit to the local town ambulance services is dwindling. And not only is the pool dwindling, but the degree or the level of education and training that they have to have and the cost associated with that is increasing. So you got, you got all these forces, but I think the point is well taken, that a study needs to be done so that you crush the numbers. But, and also, Sean more first in this, but also, you know, you don't want to kick your towns out either. There's gotta be town involvement, I think, so that every, because everybody has, you know, fire districts and ambulance districts. People in town are very covetous of those things, they don't want to let them go. So I think you have to kind of work with them there too.
It's not the ambulances or the buildings that are my concern with this whole thing, and I don't know if you can do this through a contract service, but it's a staffing issue that is going to be the biggest problem for us, to staff that ambulance, you know, however many hours, 24 hours a day, it's going to be very difficult for a town or rescue squad to staff that without having a larger group of people to draw from to do that. That's why possibly a countywide system would be better. But then on the other hand, you know, is there a better service that the county could provide to the people of this county than emergency medical services? You know, answer me that, is there a better service that's needed in this, in this county? I don't believe there is.
Anything else?